Call the meeting to order, please. This is the Village of Riverside Board of Trustees regular meeting for Thursday, June 20th, 2019, at 7:00. Please call the roll.
Trustee Peters.
Here.
Trustee Galgos.
Here.
Trustee Gisa.
Here.
Trustee Cannon.
Here.
Trustee Evans.
Here.
Trustee Pollock.
Here.
President Sells.
Here.
Attorney Mars. Also President/Manager Francis.
And sitting in for Village Clerk Haley tonight is Director Johns, who's going to be taking the meeting minutes. So if you'll please join us for the pledge.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to everyone who is here tonight and the folks who are watching at home. If you do want to address the village board tonight, I ask that you make your comments from the podium so that the folks at home can hear and see what you have to say. If you are here for the either to talk about vehicle stickers or the rainbow flag, I would ask that you wait until we get to those agenda items to make your comments because we have some other folks who have some very short comments with regard to some other village issues. So first up tonight, maybe some of you read this remarkable story in The Landmark. It was, I was quite moved by it, so I asked our Chief Buckley and Deputy Chief Sherman to come tell this story. It's quite a remarkable story.
So thank you, President Sells, Village Manager Francis, and the members of the Board of Trustees for allowing me to present some information related to the fire department. John Firstos was a firefighter here at Riverside Fire Department from 1954 until he passed away in 1958 after fighting a locomotive engine fire out here on the Chicago Burlington and Quincy Railroad tracks, which is now known as the Burlington Northern Santa Fe Railroad Tracks. The fire was at the Long Common Crossing, and once the fire was extinguished, firefighter Firstos returned to his family business, which was located at that time at 208 East Burlington, which has recently been removed. The building was torn down recently, where he suffered a medical emergency and passed away a short time later. By today's standards, this would be considered a line-of-duty death, and we felt that it be fitting to recognize firefighter Firstos and his family for the sacrifice they made to the Village of Riverside. So on May 14th, I was accompanied by firefighter Firstos' daughter, Joan Lebeck, to the Illinois Firefighters Memorial, which is located on the Capitol grounds down in Springfield, Illinois. At this location, there was a brick placed in the memorial bearing the name of firefighter Firstos and his years of service here at Riverside. During this honorary brick dedication, we were joined by Governor Pritzker, State Representative Mike Zaleski, State Representative Jim Durkin, and State Treasurer Mike Freyarks, as well as firefighter John Valente, who's here, and his wife Tracy and their kids. As a remembrance to this honorary brick and the memorial, we have designed a photo for Joan and her family. So I'd like to present this to you. What this is, is a picture of the memorial. Sorry, go on. With an actual blown-up picture of the brick that is placed inside the memorial. So I'll hold this for a moment. There's a little more. So I'd like to now call on Deputy Chief Bill Sherman to tell the interesting story of how this information was obtained. Bill is very active with the Historical Commission here in Riverside and has done an outstanding job archiving the Village of Riverside as well as the fire department.
Thank you.
So one day, a granddaughter of a former member walked in and was looking for information on Frank Morosek, who's the former water director and also a former fireman. So we shared information, and I asked her if she had a scrapbook, and she looked, she couldn't find it, she thought she threw it out. But a week later, yeah, she found it and brought it in. So we started going through the articles, and they were from 1960 to, or 1940 to about 1960. And one of the articles was the story of John. And it hit home that, you know, he qualified to be a line-of-duty death, which now is recognized throughout the state, throughout the country. So we brought it to the attention of the chief, and it took off from there. And we want to thank Tracy because Tracy, through Facebook and Ancestry, tracked down Joan. So we ended up putting it all together. So that's the background.
A little more to that story. We found out that Joan actually is a member here of the Riverside Township Mental Health Commission, so...
I'm the staff secretary.
So she does, she does work here.
I'm not a resident, so I can't...
But she does have a relationship to the village to this day. So Joan asked Bill a couple of weeks ago for a copy of the newspaper because Bob Uphears wrote such a nice article about this event. So we were trying to find her another copy, so instead of getting her a paper copy... There you go, Bill.
Thank you.
So... (Applause). Very good. So your father, John, will always be remembered for his sacrifice and service here to the Riverside Fire Department and the Village of Riverside. Thank you very much.
Thank you. (Applause).
Since you're there, you're going to update us on the fire department's ISO rating.
All right, Bill, get back up there. Bill was very instrumental in this also. So during the fourth quarter of 2018, the Riverside Fire Department was evaluated by the Insurance Service Office, otherwise known as ISO. Previously, fire departments were evaluated every 10 years, but that has since changed, and they're now evaluated every five years. The entire operation of the fire department is evaluated, which includes staffing, communications, reporting, training, public education, fire prevention, water supply, and vehicle maintenance. On April 22nd, the Riverside Fire Department received notification that our ISO classification was being upgraded to a Class II. The fire department was previously a Class III department. ISO uses a scale of one being the highest and 10 being the lowest. By the fire department being a Class II department, it plays a significant factor in the underwriting process at insurance companies. Most US insurance companies use this process to decide what prices to charge for personal and commercial property insurance. But more importantly, it shows that the Riverside, the Village of Riverside, has an excellent fire department who are trained, equipped, and prepared to respond to emergencies. I would like to commend and thank all the members of the fire department who consistently perform their jobs well, and I've got a bunch of guys that are out here and there's still a few in the hallway, but I would also like to especially thank a few members who worked extremely hard to accomplish this review. Jim Mulligan in the Training Division, DJ Maholik, the EMS and Public Education Division, Dave Pierdok in the Fire Prevention Division, Kevin Carraco and Dan Tab with the Water Department, and especially Bill Sherman for spending tireless hours and days putting this information together. This was truly an intensive task, and Bill made sure it was completed properly. He spent a lot of time doing this, and it wasn't easy because he'd have to chase all of us down and find us and get numbers from us and reports, so it was a lot of work on his part. So out of the 41,177 fire departments that are evaluated in the United States by ISO, there are only 1,945 which are ISO Class II or better. This puts Riverside in a distinguished group. And a big thanks to all the guys that are here for supporting us. (Applause). Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. You are already a distinguished group in our eyes, so... So next up, we have Director Johns, who is along with Mr. Gavin of Lauderbach and Ammon, is going to present the highlights of what you're all here for, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Director Johns.
Good evening. On an annual basis, the state statute requires the village to conduct an audit of their financial statements. The board has entered into a five-year agreement with Lauderbach and Ammon, and this is the second year of that contract. After the board accepts the audit tonight, a treasurer's report will be published in the One State Journal, and a report will be filed with the State Controller's Office at the end of the month. At this time, I'd like to introduce Tim Gavin from Lauderbach and Ammon, who will help present the report to the board.
Thank you. I will be brief, I promise. I realize that not everyone is here for me, and I certainly don't expect any applause. First of all, formally, on behalf of Lauderbach and Ammon, I'd like to thank Karen and her staff for their assistance in prepping for the audit and their cooperation during the whole process. I'm going to point out a few highlights from the report, and if there are any questions from the board, I'm more than happy to answer them. First and foremost, I'd like to stress that the report does present the certificate of achievement, which was earned for the December 31st, 2017 report. This year's report will once again be submitted to the certificate program, and we fully expect to earn a certificate for this report as well. Immediately following that, on pages 10 and 11, is our independent auditor's report. The important takeaway from that is that we issued what's called an unmodified opinion, also known as a clean opinion, and that's the highest level of assurance we are allowed to give. I always say, if you do not read anything else in this report, read the management's discussion and analysis. That's starting on page 12. The management's discussion and analysis presents key figures, some highlights, some comparative information, and plain, simple language to explain not only how the financial statements are structured, but a few key financial highlights and the reasons behind some of the changes from year to year. A few highlights I'll point out in particular, the general fund of the village did meet its target for fund balance reserves with approximately $140,000 surplus for the year. In addition to that, capital projects and capital asset investment did continue in 2018. Also, no new bonded debt was issued, and the village paid off over $830,000 of existing bonded debt. And then a couple of particular financial highlights on pages 32 and 33. This is the balance sheet of the governmental funds of the village. And again, the general fund did meet its 25% cash flow target with a committed fund balance of just over $2 million, and also accumulated an additional $964,000 in available unassigned fund balance. The, a few pages later, on pages 35 and 36, these are essentially the income statements for the governmental funds or the results of operations. Overall, there was a decrease in fund balance. That actually represents an intentional spend-down of fund balance for capital purposes, so it's an investment in infrastructure. But the general fund did report, again, a $140,000 surplus for the year. Those are the highlights I wanted to point out. Like I said, again, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Gavin, very much.
Thanks.
We appreciate it. Karen, as always, great job. Thank you. Next up is Public Comp, Ms. Cozy.
Welcome to the Bill Sherman Show, and you will know why I say that in a few minutes. I'm here tonight as president of the Riverside Township Lions Club. Each year for the past probably 70 years, Riverside has celebrated the tradition of naming one of its citizens as the, well, it used to be the man of the year, but we changed that. Thank you, Kay Snyder. And so since then, it's been known as the person of the year. A committee is selected, and from that committee, we accept nominations, and it can be any resident applying for this. And at that time, we decide to choose someone who will actually be very unaware that they're going to get it. This year, we are very proud and very pleased to announce that Bill Sherman is our person of the year. The kiss was great, too. That was, I guess that's my bonus. Don't always get that from everyone. But anyway, Bill was chosen because he's done over 40 years of service to the village through the fire department and a lot of other little things that we didn't know about. And it was nice when I called him up, and it's always fun to get the reaction. He didn't hang up on me, but he did say, "I'm speechless." And I said, "That shows that you are very deserving of this." So normally, we have the person drive in an antique car in the parade, and Bill was always there. He was passing out candy and walking, and I told him, "Well, you'll be riding in the parade. That's your first official job." And he goes, "I'm not going to be walking?" So we decided that this year, we're going to have him ride in the antique car, in the antique fire truck. So do wave y'all hello and make him feel really wanted because he is. And then in the fall, there will be a dinner held at the golf club. It is open to anyone who wants to pay the price of a ticket, and I'm going to tell you that I think this year, you better get your reservations in early because I think it's going to be a crowded room. I've known Bill for a lot of years and have seen him do a lot of things, and he followed his father in the fire department and has been a wonderful example to the young people here in the town to become a fireman, to give support to the village, and I am very excited to have Bill be this person of the year. Thank you. (Applause).
(Inaudible) fights just for this occasion in celebration of Bill's person of the year status.
Okay, we have a couple of trustees on this board who need to be reined in, and I have found that that has become my job. I have even offered to have a chair put behind them so I could kick Alex, and now it's Danny also.
One though.
One. Danny's a whole 'nother story. We won't go there, will we? No. But as a member of the Friend of the Fourth, we talk about different things, and those of you who have been here a long time may remember when we had the water fight in the park, in the Big Ballpark.
Yes.
And parents loved it because their kids would come home totally mud-soaked, and the Big Ballpark would take months to get back. Now, these two have decided they would like to bring that tradition back. The firemen are shaking their heads. That's because they're, you're young, we'll talk about it later. But also, Alex, I'm glad you reminded me, too, that the, we also are going to have the Scuffy Regatta, sponsored by the Lions Club. That is July 6th. And then, if you don't think there's enough hot air in Riverside, it's going to be in the form of a hot air balloon on the 20th of July, and tickets will become available, I believe, starting tomorrow.
Friday, 6th, yep.
Which would, and so we've got those things coming up. Was there anything else we had? Okay. I thank you very much and hope to see you at some of these events. And the regatta is in memory of the late scuffgrows. And you don't have to be in a kayak, but just come out and watch it. It's very, it's very nice, and you can stand over by the, by the swinging bridge, and I will be the one not standing on the swinging bridge because I don't like when it swings. So, thank you. (Applause).
Well deserved. Ms. Jackson.
Hi, I'm Amy. I'm a volunteer market manager for the Riverside Farmers Market, and I wanted to, I should have done this several weeks ago because we're in our third week now, but I wanted to let everybody know the market is every Wednesday from 2:30 to 7:00, and we're off to a great start. Ron and I were talking, knock on wood, this has been like our best year ever, so we hope you guys can come check it out. Trustee Evans is there every week, and President Sells. I hope everybody else can come see what's going on. And I was, I think you guys should consider, we have a community tent there every week and maybe hosting like an Ask a Trustee event, just even once. I know most of you work full-time jobs, but it would be a great opportunity to run into people that you never see because I'm there on a weekly basis, and I see different people every week, so it might be a good opportunity for you guys to kind of, I know you've done coffees in the past, I don't know what that attendance has been like, but this would be a great opportunity to run into residents and stay engaged, so think about it.
I'll do it if you don't suddenly decide. My sharpener.
Not a problem. So I hope you guys can come check it out at least once this season.
Thanks. And Amy's being modest. She's a driving force and has been from the very beginning behind the, behind the farmers' market.
I'm Joan Taylor, speaking, wearing two different hats tonight. First, as president of Riverside Arts Weekend. That was last month. Thank you to all the residents who came out and supported the arts despite threats of rain, actual rain, straight-line winds, evacuated to the train station. It turned out to be a very successful weekend. Special shout-out to Public Works for improvising to get around mud and standing water. Still a fun weekend. Next year, we'll probably do it not the weekend before Memorial Day, but the weekend after Memorial Day, so go ahead and put it on your calendars. My other hat is as the former president of Riverside Junior Women's Charity. Last month, I ended my year long-term. Each president has a theme, and my theme was, quote, attributed to Anne Frank, "No one has ever become poor by giving." And during my year, I saw the richness of Riverside's generosity. Because of our month-long fundraiser called Riverside Gives in December and our Third Annual Brewze Cruise in April, we were able to raise and give away $27,700 to almost 40 families and organizations this year. And again, that's because of Riversideers who were very generous contributing to these events, so thank you to everybody who helped out juniors this year. Our current president, Ashley Prosser, is out in the hallway along with another member. She's waving, so we have more events coming up this year, so please continue to support us. Thank you.
Director Malke.
Good evening, residents of Riverside, President Sells, Village Board, Village Manager Francis. I'm going to try and match the excitement of Bill Sherman being named Person of the Year and just tell you a little bit more about our July 3rd and 4th festivities that we have coming up. In my 16th year as Parks and Rec Director, it's one of the events that is closest to my heart. It's really the one that brings the community most together, and over those years, to see the traditions and the generations come back to Riverside, bring their kids back to Riverside, it really means as much to the department as I'm sure it does to the residents. Of course, all of the festivities are centered around Guthrie Park, and we could not do any of the festivities without the help of the Friends of the Fourth. You've heard their name already. You will hear it continually. We appreciate all of their help. July 3rd, we'll start with our opening ceremonies and our concert. We have a popular band back, Libido Funk Circus. Local vendors will be on hand to purchase food and beverages. That all starts at 5:30 on the 3rd. On the 4th, we have our 5K Run, which starts at 7:30. Still time to register, still spots open. If you'd like to get in shape up till the last minute, you can even sign up race day morning. The parade starts at 8:45. If you are in the parade, as many of you are, the lineup starts at 8:15, and that's up at Big Ballpark. The festival concludes the festivities right after the parade. That is in Guthrie Park as well. We have our toddler trot and, of course, the classic car show. Like I said, we're happy to be part of this community tradition, especially this year as we celebrate Riverside's 150th. Thank you.
(Applause).
Reports of village officers. Did I see someone? Oh.
Do you need, did you leave? Do you need to tell the tears for the court that John reported?
Always.
Just about the Parks and Rec office?
Just, yeah, contact the Parks and Rec office, and he will find something for you to do. Much appreciated.
So move on to reports of village officers. First is my report. I just want to tell you a quick story that transpired over Memorial Day weekend. About 11 o'clock on Memorial Day, Saturday of Memorial Day weekend, I got a call from a staff person with Representative Vianna Weaver's office, our new representative, telling me that they wanted to get a list of asks for the Illinois Capitol bill because the General Assembly was going back into session the following day, on Sunday, to discuss the Capitol bill and to move forward on a vote. I told her, "Well, you know, this is the Saturday of Memorial Day weekend. Our staff is at home with their families, but I'll see, I'll see what I can do." I called Manager Francis at home on Memorial Day weekend with her family. By 3 o'clock that afternoon, Manager Francis had put together a comprehensive list of asks for the Village of Riverside. As a result of her work over that weekend, Representative Zaleski and Representative Vianna Weaver were able to get over, we got $650,000 attributed to the Village of Riverside in the Capitol bill, and that is directly attributable to the work that Manager Francis did over that weekend. So thank you.
(Applause).
And that's all I have. Manager Francis?
Thank you. I have two items that actually involve President Sells. I'd like to congratulate and recognize President Sells. Last Friday, he was elected as president of the West Central Municipal Conference. The conference represents communities within the West Central Cook Region. It's quite an honor to be elected as president, so I thought I would share that with residents. It's also quite an undertaking in addition to his volunteer efforts here. Now he has to attend additional meetings and help facilitate that group, so congratulations.
And then I have one other item, also recognizing President Sells. Prior to this board meeting this evening, President Sells was recognized, and I'll show this even, it's probably difficult to see, but was recognized by the Riverside Masonic Lodge, number 862, by receiving the distinguished honor of the Community Builders Award, and this prestigious award was established so that lodges can formally recognize outstanding non-masons who have distinguished themselves through service to their community, local and state governments, places of worship, and/or to humanity at large. So congratulations.
(Applause).
Thank you very much. At the, at the West Central meeting, Director Pellegrino came up after the meeting and said, "Congratulations, you have another non-paying job." So, but it's a welcome. At this point now, we are going to switch the agenda around. We're going to move to considerations, and considerations, it just entails a kind of an informal discussion among the trustees and folks in attendance. And first up is a review of the vehicle sticker and trailer enforcement. And Director Johns, you're going to give us some background.
Good evening. The village conducted an audit of the 2018-19 vehicle stickers purchased against the Secretary of State list of registered vehicles to Riverside. Staff identified approximately 2,300 vehicles that did not currently have stickers. We have worked with many residents to update their information with either the village or the Secretary of State. Early in the response stage, staff noted some ambiguity in the village code language requiring vehicle stickers for trailers. Staff would like some additional guidance from the board regarding stickers on trailers.
So since, since this issue came up, you know, we've taken another look at the, at the language in the village code. It might, there are various ways to interpret the, the language in the village code as to whether trailers are even required to have stickers. But I would ask the trustees at this point, since we're talking about this, there are some other issues that have come up along the same line. We've heard about people who want to reduce the, the cost of vehicle stickers for scooters, which I assume would include motorcycles. There's been some talk about whether we should reduce the vehicle sticker amount for antique cars. At a, one request that, that we received that hit me in particular was a request that active-duty military who are, even though they're required, they have their, to have their cars registered here, they actually have their cars with them at the place where they are stationed, so whether there could be a waiver of the vehicle sticker fee during those times while they're on act, on active duty. And then lastly, a consideration of the possibility of senior discounts. So trustees, it's up to you. of senior discounts. So, trustees, it's up to you.
Are we going to anything on this matter tonight?
We, we're going to talk it through. If you want to give direction to staff to come back with suggested ordinance changes that would reduce or change the structure, the fee structure, we can do that.
All right.
Mr. Pollock?
I'd like to see us taking a more nuanced approach to vehicle stickers. In other words, carve out some discounts for seniors, perhaps, military, smaller trailers, smaller scooters, motorcycles, whatever. But, I hate to say it, I think we have to be honest with ourselves. We can't afford to reduce the overall revenue from this program. So, that means any cut we make, discount for seniors or discount for military, has to be made up for an increase somewhere else. I'd love to be able to reduce it across the board, as I know we all would. But the fact is, this is a significant revenue producer for the village, and unless staff or somebody can come up with services that could be cut, I think we have to, you know, face the fact that we have to maintain that half million dollars in revenue that we get from this program. But I do think that, I personally would be glad to pay more on my stickers if military and seniors would get a discount, and I think most people would feel that way.
Just for the sake of folks watching at home, folks who are here, there is a, there is a graph in the handouts to give you an idea. In 2018, 2019, the vehicle sticker sales, cars brought in $479,430, motorcycles $6,480. The next two were Class C and Class T motor trucks. Now, in theory, this is where the trailers would fall into. However, it's our understanding that we haven't actually required stickers in trailers for years. So, there, to your point, trustee Pollock, if we were to do away with the requirement for having stickers for trailers, we would, we would see no decrease. So, for those, those two classes of the Class C and Class T, it was slightly over $21,000. It's for a total of $507,000. So, the vehicle stickers are a significant revenue stream for the village. And I know that there has been some discussion about, you know, the amount that other communities pay and how it's less, but I also would encourage people to keep it, take into account the, the extra sales revenue that those communities have. Riverside is, is almost completely dependent on property taxes because of the smallness of our, of our business district. So, to trustee Pollock's point, if we start making significant cuts, we're, it either have to be, they have to make the revenue up somewhere, or we have to cut services. Those really are the two options. So, further comments?
Yeah, I echo trustee Pollock. My, when I went through this, I looked at it, and I think seniors and active military certainly should get some sort of a discount. And the small trailers should probably be eliminated, which sounds like it's a flat revenue. But I do think that if we're going to do that, we probably need to increase the 90 up in order to make up that loss. And as Doug, as trustee Pollock said, I'd be perfectly comfortable personally with my three vehicles, one of which is an antique car, moving those up in order to benefit the active military and senior citizens.
I was going to say, with regard to the motorcycles, I did notice that every, most every other village around us has some sort of reduction for that. And I would think that it wouldn't, given that it's only $6,400, that may not be that much of a hit to at least give a little something there, given that they don't use the roads as much and they don't, you know, they're using the services less. But I otherwise agree with everything you've said, and I'm, I too would be more than willing to pay an additional amount for my cars, for the standard automobiles, to see the seniors and the, and the military get a discount.
We all received a lot of emails, in addition to those accusing us of being homophobic, about the trailers. And I, for one, agree that if there's no revenue, given the fact that the cost to register with the state is nominal, I would support simply amending what we need to amend to make sure that trailers are not cut. You know, other than the higher rate that will apply to trustee Gies and trustee Pollock that they volunteered for, I'm not in favor of raising the rates. One thing that I was intrigued by, the Village of Hinsdale had a discounted or no rate for disabled veterans and POWs, which I thought was a wonderful statement on how important veterans and POWs are. And I would support that change. But as far as other changes, you know, I go back to the reason why we have the fee. It's a significant source of revenue. And I think nobody in this room would say, "Let's give a discount to some people if that means we're raising the rates on others." I think $90 is a high fee. I think we all acknowledge, though, that the village needs to fund what they do, the services they provide. I think after sitting through these meetings, you realize that it is frighteningly lean budget on what we need to do. So, I would, I would be against further discounts, you know, other than the trailer, which I think is, is a lay-down, and then just as a statement in support of our disabled veterans and POWs.
Am I right? Is there a consensus that we want to just do away with the vehicle stickers for trailers?
Yeah, it sounds like it.
Yes. Looks like there's a majority there. So, that, that we can work on for sure. Would anyone, is anyone here in the audience would like to address or say something with this issue? Please.
Hi, my name's Candy Grace, 379 Audubon Road, Riverside. And I just wanted to give a little bit of background, because I was a village trustee when we raised the price to $90. And if you think this is exciting, you should have been on the board then, because they, we had all of these people who were just very angry that all of a sudden it went from 20, or whatever the average was, up. But as everyone has sat here tonight, and I want to reiterate, it's a significant source of revenue, so don't carve out too much. Trailers, obviously, I didn't live on Audubon, because we would have thought about that, because that's part of why I'm here. I live on Audubon. Now, we use our trailer, literally, it gets driven three times a year, one to take it from storage, one in the parade, and then to take it back to storage. And it was handmade. So, the idea of paying $90 a year for that is just, it just, it's ludicrous. But anyway, I can see that you're, you're on board there. So, the other point I wanted to make, though, is I don't think we should be making too many carve-outs. I think we, we need the revenue, and if we're going to give, if you're going to give carve-outs, then everybody else has to go up. We don't have sales tax. We don't have other sources of revenue. That's why we instituted that high fee, because it was the only way, as a non-home rule municipality, that we could generate those kind of dollars. And so, I think, you know, I know we've gotten a lot of email and a lot of comments. If you get rid of the trailers, I agree about the servicemen. They're not, you know, they have to have the car with them, but register, they don't have options. So, maybe that's a carve-out, but then, everybody else has to go up, in my humble opinion. So, thanks.
You were a person of your 2001, right?
Yes, I was. No, 2009.
So, with regard, with regard to, with regard to the active military and disabled veterans and POWs, I can't imagine that that is a significant amount. So, do I see a consensus that we would like to just waive those, those costs? Active military while they are active military, and then disabled and POWs going forward?
Completely?
Yes.
Or do you discount?
I would, with regard to the disabled veterans and POWs, I would waive it completely, because I can't imagine that that is going to be a significant...
They were still registered vehicles with us.
They still have to register the vehicles, yes. Yes.
Disabled or active?
Well, active would be basically a waiver. So, while they're on active duty, they wouldn't have to pay it during the time in which they're on active duty. The others would be permanent.
And do we have a way to monitor and confirm active duty versus non-active duty? I'm just afraid that we're creating an administrative burden.
Anytime we make any kind of change like this, we're committing...
No, I agree, but that is a non-static change, where if it's a, somebody who's a POW, somebody who's a disabled veteran, that's something that has to be checked once.
Right.
This active duty versus non-active duty, I think, creates, you know, an issue of monitoring. And we saw how difficult it is on, you know, the staff did a great job on trying to find who is registered, who is not. This Illinois Secretary of State records are poor at best, and that would just give one more thing to send out a letter. And the last thing I think we want to do is, you know, a letter goes to somebody on active duty. They're not available to respond, and then what does staff do? I mean, I think it's just a hard thing to monitor. It's admirable to want to do that, but to me, I'm not quite sure if, you know, we don't quantify what the revenue loss is going to be, and just monitoring active duty versus inactive duty, and...
It seems to me the best we could do would be just to notify the residents at large that we have this, this possibility. And folks who, who come in to take advantage of it, they can, they can demonstrate their active-duty status, and I don't see that being particularly hard.
I guess I could live with a discount as opposed to a waiver. For the active-duty only, I think the waiver for the disabled veterans and POWs.
How difficult would it be to gather some of this data? And not, not, not the active-duty, but, but put the effort for the active-duty members, have them come in and do it. But also, with regard to the seniors, and even the veterans, how difficult would it be for us to take that census, or do we have that same thing?
For the 2019 renewal period, we're pretty far along in the process, because they're due June 30th.
Right, it would be 2020.
If we're talking about next year, we could come to the board during the budget process with options about this. We don't have much data on seniors, so that would be a difficult budget calculation to give.
I have a question about seniors. There is such a thing as a circuit breaker system, where seniors of lower income do file with the state to get a break on that, right? Okay, so we, we could monitor that if they provide that evidence. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. Is that something that I would...
But what I'm, what I'm asking for here, or not asking for, just asking about, is if there's a way that we can determine how much, how much, how many seniors we have, that would, how it would impact the revenue, that would be helpful, rather than just doing it in a vacuum, before we say, oh, 50%, 25%, whatever it is, where we end up voting on, if we end up voting on. Is there a way we can do that?
We don't have that data.
Yeah. Well, what's going to happen here is with this, with this direction from the board, just like director John just said, in the 2020 budget cycle, they will come back with a firm, a firm proposal for you to consider. For, like, for example, with the, with the scooters, you know, trustee Peters, they can say, you know, at these various reductions, this is what the financial impact would be. So, it sounds like we, the two things that we have consensus on tonight are to remove the trailers and to provide disabled veterans and POWs with, with permanent waivers. Is that correct?
I agree with that.
Okay. And then the rest of it, staff will come back during the budget cycle and, and make proposals. Is that okay?
Just for clarification, so for the disabled veterans and POW, and also trailers, that would be retro to, for this year, correct?
I would say yes.
And then for the trailers, because the notification said for the current, the 1819, and then for the 192020, that would be retro for that. Okay.
Correct.
What about antique vehicles?
We haven't talked about antique vehicles.
Oh, okay.
So, what do you think about antique vehicles?
I think they should always get a break to sustain it. It's a break, so, I mean, we should kind of follow suit.
I wouldn't agree with that. I mean, I have one, and it's a luxury for me to have sit in my garage and getting a discount on it. I don't think it would be fair. I'd rather give it to the, to the senior citizens.
Yeah, the question I have, and I think we've sort of lost sight of this, is if we're giving these discounts, and I think the monetary hit of not having trailers, not having a fee imposed on disabled veterans or POWs is going to be nominal, if we're going to give seniors a discount, if we're going to eliminate ATVs, if we're going to give veterans a discount, are we also proposing then the rate of, raise the fee for everybody else? Because if that's the case, I can't be for that.
I think this is just a discussion. That's, that's what I would propose, but it sounds like staff will go back, this for the 2020 budget, not 2019.
Right.
I mean, that, I mean...
Okay. I think we have it. All right. Thank you very much. And staff will notify folks that...
Can I make a question?
Yes, Ms. Johnson.
For the disabled veterans and POWs, we were talking about that to be effective this year?
Yes.
Okay. We will put out a social media post next week and try to let people know who have already bought them, about what the refund process would be if they've already paid them.
Okay. And you'll also notice by folks who receive notices because of trailers.
Correct.
So, and we did receive a lot of emails, and people have been told, you know, via email, that they would be notified after this meeting, the decision at the board. So, if you have friends who have trailers, please, please let them know. Okay.
We don't have to buy them this year or pay them last year, correct?
No, no, no. Okay. So, we'll move on now. Next item is a discussion of the flag display. And let me, let me start us off by giving just a little bit of background. On June 3rd of this year, we received, the Village of Riverside received a rainbow flag from a local advocacy group with a request that we fly it on the, the flagstaff out here in front of Township Hall. We did not have a meeting on June 6th. It was my opinion that I did not have the authority, as village president, to order the flying of a flag on the, on the village flagpole. I consider it to be village property, and that the proper route to go would be to have the village trustees make that decision. So, we put it on the agenda for, for this evening to discuss. It's important to note, though, that what the village cannot do is we cannot accept flags from organizations and then fly those flags on the village flagpole. And that's because if we do so, it creates, possibly, likely, creates a limited public forum. And if we created a limited public forum, the village board will lose its discretion as to what flags, in addition to the American flag, it could fly. So, that is something that we cannot do. What we can do, as a statement of our own governmental free speech, is decide what kind of values we stand for, and what kind of flags we would like to fly to represent those values. So, that is the discussion we could have tonight. With regard, with regard in particular to the rainbow flag, it really is a continuation of Resolution 42 that was passed in 2017, which is, was a diversity and inclusion resolution. So, that, it is in that context of governmental free speech that we're going to be having this conversation tonight. We have received a lot of emails, and I thank all of you who sent those emails for sending them. This village board depends on resident input to, to make an informed decision. I've had a lot of folks stop and talk, talk with me. Spent a lot of activity on social, social media. So, I have a feeling that the village board has, has heard a lot of the viewpoints that a lot of you are here to, to speak to tonight. So, what I would suggest in terms of the efficiency of the meeting is to allow the trustees, since they haven't had a chance yet, to really publicly talk about this. This is the first chance they've had to really state their views, to let them have a chance to, to talk it through. And then anyone who's here that would like to have additional comments, you're certainly more than welcome to do that. So, with that, I would turn it over to the trustees for conversation. Ms. Evans?
I'm in support. When I think about the pride flag, I think about young people who are questioning and what it means to them. The flag is a symbol of love and inclusion for kids, and kids right here in Riverside, who feel like they don't fit in. So, that visibility and creating a sense of belonging in their own village is important. In addition, there's obviously overwhelming support for the LBGD, LGBTQ+ community. So, let's fly the flag.
Ms. Jane?
President Sales, just for those of you who have not walked by my house, we do have two pride flags in front of our house. But, you know, one, one issue that I've, I've had with this whole process, which is personally upsetting to me, is either how incredibly inept this group is at working with government to get something done, or that they say have some other motive in the way they've handled this. As you've noted, we have a board form of government. President Sales is not the mayor. He doesn't have... President Sells is not the mayor, he doesn't have unilateral activity to do much of anything. We have a board, we meet, our meetings are set in advance, they're published. Everybody knows when the board meetings are. In my mind, if this was solely about the village flying the flag, they would have taken the route that another group has taken, coming to the village well in advance, asking the question, what do we need to do to make this happen? And then working with the village, working with our limitations, do it prior to a board meeting, and then have the board make that decision. As President Sells said, I think this issue has already been discussed. I think it's consistent with the prior resolution, so I anticipate that there will be no problem today on a village decision to fly the flag. But what's personally offensive to me is that this group would go on social media, walk in on June 3rd, after we've had a meeting, when we don't have a meeting until the 20th, and demand that they fly the flag that they've given. And then demand and go on social media upset on why the village is not flying the flag. And then send emails implying that we are somehow against flying the flag, that we are intentionally dragging our feet. I would hope that this organization did not attempt to take over this issue in an attempt to making them appear more relevant than they are. This pride flag is, is very important. It's very important on who we are as a village. I myself, my son is here, he knows how I've raised him, that there's tolerance for all, that everybody is entitled to live their life, that this is a big planet, and we're here to all get along. And that's the village that I live in. We heard today with the, with the fire chief and his recommendations, talking about a fallen firefighter. We heard about our Fourth of July celebration where everybody is welcome, everybody comes together and has a great time as a village. And to read on social media that the village is somehow not going to pass this resolution when you didn't even give us an opportunity to meet is offensive. You should be embarrassed. So, again, to be accused of being intolerant is personal to me. Being part of an organization that was accused of being intolerant is personal to me. That's not the way I was raised, that's not the way my son was raised, and I just cannot live with being accused by that without having some sort of public forum that says this is not the way the village was, they were not against this, we were wrong.
Further comment?
I'll just share quickly. I do, I'm, I am, from the government perspective, from the village's perspective, I am in support of flying the flag. I do just want to, more logistically and thinking about future issues coming up, I want to think about specifically where that flag is flown, because this will open up, it's not if it will, it will open up additional groups to come to us to support their causes. And that's fine, we can make that determination as a government if we want to say something through our government free speech, but we want, I would like to see a process in place, and I'm not sure if there's any legal guidance we could get through that, but a process in place of how we approach this project, this, this type of request in the future. Because I think that that is where a lot of maybe the confusion has lied, it's Thursday. It's Thursday. I think that's where a lot of, because, you know, things snowball on social media, and we've all seen it, and there's not the answer out there of, no, this is the process and this is the policy. And if we do have one, let's make it a little bit more available, because I couldn't, I didn't know it, I didn't know it before this, this meeting. So I think that we need to have a system in place and have a discussion about how we approach topics like this, because they will come again.
I have a question. Okay, we had more than one flag request, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And when was the American Legion flag request submitted to us?
Several months ago.
And what were they told?
They were told that a decision would be made in due course.
I think they were told no.
That is not true.
Well, that is what I got. They were told no.
Well, they were wrong.
Okay, so then this issue came, and somehow we had our legal department say, hey, can we look at this and find a loophole so that we can have it?
That is not true.
Okay. Do we have a flag already?
Yes.
For whom?
The rainbow flag.
And did the village purchase that flag?
Yes.
Did the village purchase an American Legion flag?
No, because we haven't...
Okay, so we have special treatment for one over the other. That's wrong.
Okay, let's, let's unpack the misinformation that you just stated.
We have one flag over the other.
We received the American Legion flag in a request. The initial thought was that the, that the US flag code prohibited the flying of that flag.
That's right.
As it turned out, when our attorneys looked at that, it turned out that that was not the case.
After one group came to us.
Would you let me finish my comments?
Go ahead.
So once that was determined, the, the, the American Legion has a congressional charter that was granted in September, 100 years ago. So the plan was, going back to what Ms. Peters was just saying, that would be the appropriate time, if the board were to decide to make that, that decision as a, as a statement of the government's position, that would be the appropriate time to fly the flag, would be during their actual anniversary period, which is why it has not come to this board. The reason this question came to the board is the, the request for flying the rainbow flag is directly connected to Pride Month. So it was completely reasonable to have this conversation in June, even though it's late in June. I mean, it would have been nice if we could have had this conversation in April and May, and we could have flown the flag the entire month, which would have been my preference. But we, we didn't get any time for that to happen. Hopefully, going forward, every June, it will be flown. But the suggestion, your suggestion that there is, that there is special treatment here is, is not the case.
We acted quicker for one than the other.
I'm not going, I'm going to ask you again to let me finish.
Go ahead, Josh, Mr. President.
What will happen is, is that this board will have the, the opportunity at any given time, under any given request, to make a decision one way or the other, whether as a statement of village values, they want a particular flag flown. The discussion of the American Legion flag or any other flag has, has not ripened yet. It isn't time for it. That's why we're having this discussion now, is because this is now the time to have this discussion. So your suggestion that, that there is, is somehow special treatment just flies in the face of the actual facts of why we're having this discussion now. So now I'm finished, if you'd like to respond.
Maybe I say...
Anyone else? Mr. Pollak?
I am looking forward to seeing the flag, the rainbow flag fly in the Village of Riverside on, on, sorry. I am looking forward to seeing the rainbow flag fly on village property in front of the village hall as soon as possible. I appreciate very much the, that we have to take time, we, this has to go through a process, it has to be approved by the board. We cannot display flags of organizations, we can't pick and choose which organizations, but we can fly flags, as we've been advised by our attorneys, and I think it makes perfect sense that we can fly, fly flags that represent our values. And I think that, you know, I never had a doubt in my mind from the beginning that the values of this village and this board is to, is to fly a rainbow flag during Pride Month. And so I'm prepared to make a motion, if it's appropriate, to direct the village staff to proceed with the flying of the flag.
Let's just see if there's, Mr. Gisa, do you want to...
Yeah, so, I think that the one thing that, that made it difficult was that such a good, such a great thing, flying, flying a pride that represents all humanity, in my opinion, became a little bit negative in the emails that we received. And I did feel accused of things, and I just sat there, and I, I don't take things offensively, but when people were making accusations towards me personally, I was like, all right, well, they don't know who I am, so it is what it is, right? But I just think that when something so good is turned around to be something negative, it makes it a little bit frustrating for folks like myself, when I can't really speak out on social media or defend myself. So I would just say in the future, for everyone out there, whatever the topic is, give the board members a chance to speak, because I personally don't mention my opinion on something until I'm sitting in this room, because that's what I'm sworn to do. So, my second, Doug's motion.
Let's wait on the questions the second, okay? Because there, there's a certain way we need to...
But, but yeah, right, I know, I understand, but just, but just to finalize, to finalize it, I think that everyone on this board feels the same way, I think all of staff feels the same way. I think it's very recognizable, the community's saying things out there. But again, I think it goes beyond this, which is the great part about it. It's, it's not just about a specific community, to me, it's about all humanity and being inclusive to everyone, so.
Just briefly, I, to me, and some of you perhaps have heard me say this before, you know, Homestead had a notion that beauty is a civic necessity. And, and to me, what the pride flag represents is everything that's beautiful about this country. I think it has an iconic status, I think it has a universal status that transcends organizational flags. I think it, it is universally recognized as a, as a symbol of, of equal protection under the law, and equality, and fairness, and decency, all of which, I think, are the beautiful ideals that make Riverside a special place to live. So before I ask if there's anyone who wants to speak here, to going back to your motion, I would suggest that, that we term it in terms of, in furtherance and continuation of Resolution 42 that was passed in 2017, that we give direction to the village staff to begin flying the flag tomorrow. Now, one, one question is duration. I would, I would suggest that we fly it for the balance of this month, and then we fly it throughout the month of June and ensuing years, but that is, that's the final piece of this conversation that, that you need to have.
Just going to Trustee Peters' point, just want to understand the discussion, the point that you raised, and the point that the village attorneys have looked at, the discussion between creating a limited public space, which I don't think we want to do, and the sort of First Amendment rights of the village to act. So just a question of Trustee Peters, is, does that help with your concern, which I believe if, if, is a expression of our First Amendment rights as a village to act on our behalf and put the flag up? And I don't know if we need to get input from the attorneys, but I just want to make sure. Your point, which I agree with, is that we want to make sure that this clearly falls in the First Amendment expression by the village, as opposed to creating a limited public space, which we are not doing.
I do, yes, that's correct. What I'd like to see is, because there will be more coming, so I'd like to see a process, and maybe what it is, is a policy, that if you would like the, the village to make a First Amendment statement about something, you know, you come to us 20 days in advance or 30 days in advance, enough time for our board to make this decision, and that there's a process that we follow to make those, those statements. Because I think what's, what was a struggle here is that we couldn't really make the statement, and, and people were getting frustrated that we weren't making the statement. And, and that creates the animosity that is frankly unneeded, right? So, and I think especially when it comes to being unified, you know, the unity and the lack of divisiveness that the, the flag represents, it's just, that's not what we felt up here for sure. So I think for any future flags or statements that the government is going to make on its own behalf, we should have a policy in place. And it can be a very easy policy, but if, especially if it's something that the community is coming to us and asking us to state and to make that policy, we should have, or make that statement, we should have a policy in place for that.
Carrie Morris, you have a question to offer at that, at this point?
I mean, we can look at the, the possibility of a process. I think it might be as simple as, you know, we're not going to fly flags without a resolution from the board, and, and how that gets to you, we'll have to address. But, but we can work, work on something that might give this some shape going forward.
I have one question.
Yes.
So we're voting on the policy, the American flag on top of, and then the...
So it'd be the American flag, and then...
Wendell, I think, or Trustee Gisa, sorry. I think what this happened at the state capitol, I think is what, what's envisioned, if I'm wrong.
That's clear.
Yeah.
Okay. So would you like to make a motion, Mr. Pollak?
Yes, I would like to, referencing the inclusion resolution referred to by President Sells, that we direct staff to, and also referencing the discussion here tonight, that we direct staff to proceed with the flying of the rainbow flag for the rest of this month, and I, and, and for each June in subsequent years. And that's my motion, I would add to that, too. I would think that before next June, we would come back with a resolution to formalize this in the form of a policy statement.
So you have a motion by Mr. Pollak.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gisa. Before we vote, would anyone here like to say anything? Please.
President Sells, Trustees Linda McCarter, 279 East Burlington Street. Listening to your discussions, very thoughtful discussion, I appreciate all the efforts you've gone through and the hassles you've had to take throughout this whole process. I am wanting to revisit what Trustee Peters said about being able to create an environment where everyone's welcome to bring forward their opinion, because in my opinion, you're kind of opening a can of worms. Not only is gay pride an issue, so is straight pride. And if you're going to go there, what are we going to do about pro-life, pro-choice, banners, flags? It's going to open up the world of possibilities, and you're going to be spending a lot of time in rooms with meetings packed with people trying to represent their cause. I feel very strongly about representing your cause, but I feel the proper place to represent your cause is your personal property, the flags you're carrying. I saw a really cool cell phone case with the rainbow flag on it. Your home can have banners, signs, flags, anything you want. I personally don't feel that it's the job of the Village of Riverside to decide what our, the flags, we will fly flags that represent our values. They're not my values, you're not flying flags that represent my values, so now do I come to the next meeting and say, I want to fly a straight pla, straight pride flag? Because that's my value. So do we want to engage in this at all? Another thing you said, Mr. Sells, everything that's beautiful about this country, fairness and decency, you felt was represented in the rainbow flag. But I would counter that with everything that's beautiful about this country, fairness and decency, is already being flown in a flag in this town, all over this town, and that's the flag of the United States of America. That's what we belong in, and that's what represents inclusiveness, fairness, kindness, decency. We're all people of the United States of America under that flag. So I would say, why even bother getting involved in all this, because you are really opening up something big. We already have a flag that represents us all, and I think we should stick with keeping the Village of Riverside out of moral issues. Thank you.
My name is Lisa Janounis, and...
I'm Lisa Gray.
And we represent Indivisible West Suburban Action League, just want to put that right out there. And want to clear up a couple of things on how this whole thing got started. First of all, I want to thank the Board of Trustees and President Sells for listening to us, for consideration of raising the rainbow flag in Riverside that we donated and supported Pride Month. It is one of our goals since 2017 to raise awareness of the struggle of LGBTQ people everywhere, to be seen and accepted for who they are, and to be treated with fairness and respect. In taking this step, we are showing that Riverside is the warm and accepting community that we all know it to be. Now, when we started this initiative, we started talking about it just as a group, about what we wanted to do for Pride Month back in the spring. We didn't know how to go about it, we didn't even know if the village or the township owned the flagpoles, who would raise the flag. We just had this idea like, hey, let's give the village a flag to represent people that are often marginalized. We didn't mean to step on anybody's toes... We didn't mean to step on anybody's toes, we just had this idea. We came to, we didn't know the process, we weren't sure if it needed to be voted on, we just thought we would do this as an initiative. So, um, we appreciate that the board moved quickly, as quickly as they could. We didn't realize that there was a, a cancellation of a June board meeting that needed to be voted on, so that we moved as quickly as you could, and we appreciate that. And we are thrilled that you're taking this time to discuss a mission of ours, a goal of ours, and, um, we just want to thank you for your time.
That's pretty much what I wanted to say, too. But, um, I have a little bit more to add. I was one of the folks who brought the flag over on Monday, June 3rd, and in no way did I mean to put you all in a bad spot. It was coming from our heart to bring the flag. I hate doing this, because I always get really upset. So, that, that was it. I mean, we didn't mean to step on anyone's toes, I'm relatively new to all of this, and, you know, it makes a lot of sense, and you often think about it, I realize there's lots of things to consider, that you have requests from other folks to fly their flags, too. So, in no way do we mean to offend anyone, or to put you all in a bad spot. We never put out there, from the leadership team, which we're two of the folks on the leadership team, that anyone should be offensive or, um, unkind in any of their responses to you all, so I apologize for them. I hate doing this. So, I'm sorry. We really just came from a place of love to bring the flag, and that was it. I was nothing more behind it than that. No behind-the-doors tactics or anything like that. That's it.
And, and in the future, we would be happy to sit down and talk about process, procedure. We are new at this, too, and everything is a learning experience and a growing experience for all of us. So, you know, being called inept and stupid and embarrassing, that's kind of hard, that's tough. That's tough.
Well, if I called, I apologize for using that term.
Thank you, appreciate that.
But.
But anything that I corresponded with, with the, with any of the trustees, I was always very respectful and asked for consideration. I never called anybody homophobic, or couldn't do their jobs, or what. I mean, we were just, we made a request, and we learned about the procedure, and so now we will move forward from that.
Wait, Miss, I, I do want to say something.
This is actually, how the comment.
Oh, alright.
This is their opportunity to speak, guys.
And I actually learned something tonight, because, like, with you, trustee Jisa, you said that you never respond, or you never say your opinion, like, in a response, and we don't know that either. When I email the board and I don't get a response, I'm like, huh, they didn't.
I'm doing all those things.
Like, oh, no, they didn't respond to me. Like, I've gotten a response from Ben, I've gotten a response from Kristen, I've gotten responses from Doug, you know, so, uh, we don't know. We don't know if you're not listening, or what. So, I mean, it's a good thing that we have this discussion, and we learn these things. So.
Yes.
Okay, are we ready to vote?
Yes, sir. Okay, we'll have two, we'll have two more, and then we're going to vote.
I just want to say thank you for this consideration. I have way too many friends and family who fit on the colors of this flag. It's really important to me. Thank you.
So, I planned to come and talk about this, do I, have to say my address again. Yesterday, at a department meeting for the company I work with, this topic sort of came up. And it came up in the context, text of, the company I work for is a 403C, so we can't be political, but yet there are some things that we have to, in, at the company, be passionate about, without losing what we're able to do. And I thought about coming to the board meeting, because it's a similar thing that you have to do. You have to walk that line between what, what you can do and what you can't do, and not, you know, the public space, limited public space, and whatever. But anyway, what came out from our meeting and our discussion was that this flag is important to kids, because it makes them feel wanted. Sorry, I get emotional, too. And for no other reason, to have a safe space for children who aren't the same as everyone else. It's, it's critical. And so, I, you know, I applaud you for the discussion tonight, and I applaud you for the action that I'm pretty sure you're going to take.
One more.
Okay, last one.
Hi, yeah, right. I knew I should have worn this. Yeah. Oh, man. Right. My name is Chris Honig, I am the pastor at Ascension Lutheran Church here in Riverside. I'm also a resident of Riverside on Black Hawk, and I'm here personally, but also on behalf of our congregation, to voice support for displaying, uh, the rainbow flag. And I want to say thank you for, uh, putting this on tonight's agenda, and providing the space to comment and, uh, discuss. This, this is an important symbol, and it's a symbol that matters. It's a symbol of inclusion, and I, and I think I feel some of that consensus here tonight. But if Riverside is a village that I, that I know and trust that it is, then, um, I'm looking forward to you all affirming your resolution of September 2017, uh, by displaying, uh, the rainbow flag. So, thank you.
I.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Trustee Cannon.
Trustee Evans.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you all for coming.
You're not staying for the consent agenda? That's like the best part. So, since I have to read this anyway, we can, I can read this while people are leaving. Next up is the approval of the consent agenda. On the agenda this evening is to ratify the voucher list of bills June 6, 2019, approve the voucher list of bills June 20, 2019. Approve the village board trustees' regular meeting minutes of May 16, 2019. Review and file the following. Board of Police Commissioners' regular quarterly meeting minutes, February 12. The Historical Commission's regular meeting minutes, April 15. Landscape Advisory Commission meeting minutes, April 9. Special meeting, May 2nd, and regular meeting, May 14th. Parks and Recreation Board regular meeting minutes of March 18th. The Riverside TV regular meeting minutes of April 8 and May 13, 2019. The Community Development Department made 2019 monthly report, the Fire Department 20, made 2019 monthly report, the Police Department made 2019 monthly report, and the 2018 annual report. A motion to approve a special event application for independent state festivities to be held in Riverside on July 3 and 4, 2019. Motion to accept the 2018 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report of the Village of Riverside, Illinois. A resolution authorizing the sale or disposal of personal property owned by the Village of Riverside. A resolution authorizing the village manager to create a purchase order in the amount of $41,445.69 for replacement of village hall administrative area flooring through a work order contract with FH Passion Company. And lastly, a resolution authorizing execution of an intergovernmental agreement between the Village of Riverside and Village School District 96 that provides for the installation of a camera relay device on the roof of Hauser Middle School. Does anyone have anything removed for discussion? Hearing none. I have a motion by Mr. Gallegos.
Second.
By Ms. Peters, please call the roll.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Trustee Cannon.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up are reports of departments, commissions, and trustee liaisons, are the reports. Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. Um, I would ask the board's indulgence with regard to item B, a resolution amending the Village of Riverside's social media policy, uh, to, uh, to wait on that until our August meeting, if that's okay with everyone.
Motion to defer.
Uh, we don't need a motion since, uh, since, if, if there's consensus to do it. So, that's correct, right, Mr. Mars?
That's correct.
So, we have before us an ordinance creating a new Chapter 7, radio amplification in certain buildings, and Title 6, which are police regulations of the village code of the Village of Riverside relative to radio amplification systems in certain buildings. Chief Weitzel, please.
Good evening, President Sells, trustees, and manager Francis. The ordinance in front of you is a new chapter, and I'll give you a little background on how we came to this. So, um, we've had discussions, myself, the fire chief, the manager, and staff, as to how we can improve our communication system, meaning our police radios, and, uh, in some cases, fire radios, with our new consolidated dispatch center. There are some places in town that we can have dead zones, and I'm sure some of you have known that over the years, um, one of those issues has been the high school. But we came to this, uh, proposal from what would really basically be new construction in town, or substantial additions to structures that we would not be able to get our radio frequencies through. So, not to get involved in all the technicalities of it, what it basically means is when we're in the middle of a building, and the officers key up on their microphone, or the firefighters, do we want to be able to get that signal to the North Riverside facility, which is where our dispatch center is? And we're pretty successful at that, but with new construction, and the way they're building some of these new buildings, with less windows, much more concrete, cinder block, it has the potential to not get our radio signals out. So, um, working with our staff, and working with the village attorney, and our director of the 911 Center, we were able to come up with a, uh, ordinance here for your consideration that would basically, what, how it would work was if, if a building fell in a new construction or a new significant remodel, not a single-family residence, this does not, this ordinance does not include any single, single-family residents, because we've never had a problem in those. And we felt that it needed to be tested, there would be a licensed communications company, currently Riverside, uh, uses Chicago Communications for our 911 Center, they would come at the expense of the building owner, and have their radios tested to make sure the signal reaches the community, the 911 Center. It typically runs anywhere between $200 to $300 to, to get that done. What they literally do is they stand in the middle of the building, they have their testing equipment, they plug our frequency in, and they also take our radios, and they do testing to get the signal to the 911 Center, and see the strength of it, and make sure that the, the radios can get through, um, and if they can't, they would be required to buy what's simply called a repeater, there's a technical name, it's an amplifier. It goes into the ceiling, there's antennas, it would look like similar to what you get for internet boosters, and, uh, then we would keep retesting it to see how many of those boosters they would need. Typically, they'd maybe one or two, and they would put those near windows. And then, once it passed that certification, they would be okay to continue, um, with, with the amount of amplifiers that they put in there. So, it is a low expense for the testing, I believe, and we would not recommend a specific vendor. However, if somebody asked us what our communication system is, we would tell them. So, right now, the officers have Motorola radios, we would tell them that we use Motorola, we would give them the 800 frequency that we use, and we would tell them that these types of devices would be able to act as a, um, amplifier. So, it doesn't have to be a single source, but we would give them information that would best suit our needs to get the radio, or in some cases, the fire sig, uh, signal there. So, that, that is the only intent of this ordinance, um, is to get that improved, if need be.
And I, I would just point out the importance of this ordinance, we, we face a situation like this now, with regard to RB, as a result of, uh, some of the construction they, they did, there are blind spots in that building right now, where our first responders can't reach the, the, the communications facility because of, of the need of these, these relays. We've been trying to get some, get those repeaters installed for quite a while now. This would actually give us some legal authority to, to move forward in, in, in future circumstances like that. So, before we have a conversation, I'd ask for a motion to approve an ordinance creating a new Chapter 7. By Mr. Gallegos, second, by Mr. Pollak. Any discussion or questions for Chief Weitzel? Please call the roll.
Trustee Peters.
I'm.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Trustee Cannon.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Weitzel. We have no new business this evening. We do, however, have an executive session. I'd ask for a motion to adjourn to exec, executive session to discuss the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the public body. We will not reconvene, and there will be no final decisions made.
So, moved.
By Mr. Gallegos, second, by.
Second.
Ms. Peters, please call the roll.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos.
Aye.
Trustee Jisa.
Aye.
Trustee Cannon.
Aye.
Trustee Evans.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Motion carries, means adjourned. Thank you and good night.
Mr. President, I do want to apologize for being intuitive.